You are wonderful Lord of all. You are sovereign God above. All creation bows at your throne. You're amazing God. You are counsel, mighty King. You are Lord over everything. You are Savior, Messiah, and friend. You're amazing God. You are Lord. You are King. You're my Master, my Savior, my everything. You're amazing God. You are Lord. You are King. You're my Master, my Savior, my everything. You're amazing God. Israel is your God. You are counsel, mighty King. You are Lord over everything. You are Savior, Messiah, and friend. You're amazing God. You are Lord. You are King. You're my Master, my Savior, my everything. You're amazing God. You are Lord. You are King. You're my Master, my Savior, my everything. You're amazing God. You're amazing God. You are the Alpha and Omega, beginning and end. You are the Father, Son, and Spirit, King with no end. You are the Alpha and Omega, beginning and end. You are the Father, Son, and Spirit, King with no end. You are the Alpha and Omega, beginning and end. You are the Father, Son, and Spirit, King with no end. You are Lord. You are King. You're my Master, my Savior, my everything. You're amazing God. You are Lord. You are King. You're my Master, my Savior, my everything. You're amazing God. You're amazing God. You're amazing God. You're God.
Our Father in Heaven, thank you so much for your blessings which in every one of us.
Thank you Lord for each and everyone's here Pagnuon na pinili na makasama ka Pagnuon and to listen from your words O God. Thank you Father God sa mga pagpapala biyayan ay pinagkalab niyo po sa bawat isa amin. Thank you for your protections and guidance. Thank you for safety and good health Pagnuon. Na kahit mayroon pong bantahan ng pandemic sa aming pong kapaligiran na andyan ka na patuloy na kami Pagnuon ay iniingatan at ginagabayahan. We commit to you our life Pagnuon sa gabi pong ito. Ah we pray loving Father even Lord 'yung gagamitin mo na iyong lingkod sa pagpapahayag Pagnuon ng iyong salita. Anoint him Lord so that every words Pagnuon na maggagaling sa kanyang bibig Pagnuon is a word of wisdom na nagmumula po sa inyo Pagnuon. Your name be glorified Pagnuon sa kanyang buhay. Dalangin po namin na hanggang sa matapos ang gawain pong ito. Gabayan niyo po kami even Lord 'yung mga discussion questions, breakout questions. Dalangin po namin na maging pagpapala ang bawat bahagi ng aming pong programa. Dalangin po namin na patuloy mo kami samahan hanggang sa matapos ang gawain pong ito. Lahat munang ito ay aming dalangin sa ngalan ng aming Panginoong Hesus namin tagapagligtas. Amen.
Okay, good evening to all. It's a privilege for me to introduce to you our speaker for tonight. Before we hear our speaker for tonight, please allow me to say a little background about him. He is happily married for 23 years to a very beautiful lady, G, and a very intentional father to two equally beautiful daughters, Kyra and Chloe, and one good-looking son, Jacob. Despite being busy in his chosen field of profession, he is a very committed follower of our Lord Jesus Christ. He is also very much active in serving God being the head of the family ministry of CCF Antipolo and as one of the members of our Council of Servants. Friends, will not keep you from waiting too long. Prepare your hearts and minds to listen to God's message tonight. Let us all welcome on our screen the crying picture and the John Lloyd truth of our CCF Antipolo brother Jerry Castro.
Good evening everyone. Baka sabihin ang mga nakikinig lukohan ito, di ba? Kanina magtatampo na sana ako Robert eh. Kanina ang introduction mo sa iba. Ang introduction mo dun sa pamilya ko, Maganda, Pogi. Pagdating sa akin servant, sabaybawi ka bandang huli ah. But thank you for that introduction. At magpo kayo maniwala dun sa John Lloyd. Baka bangungutin po kayo mga kaibigan. But anyway, welcome everyone. Good evening po, my name is Jerry and I'd like to welcome you here in CCF Antipolo. This is your first time here. We'd like to thank you for being here and we hope that you'll be comfortable wherever you are. I know po some of you wala dito sa Pilipinas. Some of you hindi nga evening, so good morning, good noon. Kung ano man po 'yung timeline niyo dyan, good day po sa inyo. You know, we look forward to spending the next hour worshiping and learning with you. So if this is your first time, we'd like to get to know you better. As you know, 'yung host kanina mentioned, we'd like to get to know you. So if you can kindly rename your Zoom name sa totoo 'yung pangalan and just type in the chat box "Hi, first timer here" so that we can acknowledge you. And for the rest of us here, especially those who has been with us since week one of our Book of Romans series, marami pong salamat. Welcome everyone to Mierykulest, a series about God's righteousness revealed, a Bible study series from the Book of Romans. So before we proceed with our main text, let's just review what we had a couple weeks back before we jump to our session. See ya, next slide please. So, I'll just run it through, okay? So in Romans 1, we've talked about the gospel is the power of God, that we've learned that we were guilty before God and that our righteousness comes by faith in Jesus Christ. In Romans 2, we've talked about God's righteous judgment. Living by the law and circumcision, we've learned that it doesn't make them or it doesn't make us righteous in God's eyes. Experienced circumcision of the heart by the Spirit of God, yun 'yung importante. In Romans 3, we've learned about righteousness apart from the law. That righteousness comes by faith to all who believe in Christ Jesus apart from obeying the law. And in Romans 4, next slide please. Yeah. In Romans 4, we've learned that faith has always been the means for justification. He, referring to Paul, choose to believe God rather than his circumstances. Di ba? Pag binalikan natin 'yung circumstances ni Paul, parang ano ba 'yan? Parang pinagsukluban nung lamit in Tagalog, di ba? Lahat na lang ng masamang pangyayari eh naranasan niya. During the time that he was writing this, 'yung circumstance niya was quite, you know, not so good. Hindi not so good, very bad circumstance. But he is able to choose to believe the goodness ng Pagnuon, 'yung love ng Pagnuon sa kanya, 'yung plano ng Pagnuon sa kanya rather than his circumstances. Or rather than his circumstance. And in Romans 5, last week, we've learned that we are reconciled with God through Jesus Christ. That life came more abundantly in every way through the gift of Jesus. So now, we now all know these truths. The question is, what's next? Lahat ito knowledge, lahat ito head knowledge na. So parang ano na ngayon ang gagawin natin? What are we going to do? And tonight we'll talk about, next slide please. And this is our title for tonight. God's righteousness produces sanctification. And we will uncover this from the Book of Romans, chapter 6. Now, guys, friends, I want you to give me the opportunity to follow Paul's argument without giving away everything before, you know, we get to it. And so I know inevitably, what's going to happen is that we're going to cover a few verses, actually all verses, in Romans 6. And I know that it will raise a million of questions and many of which, I believe that by God's grace, will be answered in the next few slides and in the next few weeks. If you will just be with us, remain with us, just focus on our study. So I plead with you, try to be patient, stay with us, focus, enjoy the discussion and lessons. And if the questions that you have is not answered through this lesson and in the next, please let us know. We will be glad to respond, you know, drop a note, let one of the tech team here, the servants here know and we'll do the best that we can not to touch on it. And you know, as we move progressively through the letter of Paul to Romans and as we move through our lessons, we'll try to cover everything. But first, let's define, ano ba tong sanctification? Because lahat nga ng mga pinag-aralan natin are all information. So what's next? From all of this information, it should produce kasi sanctification. But the question is, what is sanctification? So next slide please. So as you can see on your screen, in Wikipedia, it says sanctification or in its verb form, I'll just read it through. Sanctify literally means to set apart for special use or purpose. That is to make holy or sacred, which we will encounter in the next few slides. Therefore, sanctification refers to the state or process of being set apart, made holy as a vessel full of the Holy Spirit of God. So now that we have come to know all of this truth, all of this, all of the learnings that we had for a couple of weeks, now we will learn that we are to be set apart. We are set apart. Sabi nga, we set apart from the rest actually. Why? Because of all of this truth. And kanina di ba sinabi ko, it's not now, it's not now that for the past few weeks, it's head knowledge for all of us. But now, it requires certain action. Tingnan niyo po 'yung isang meaning nung sanctification. The action or process of being freed from sin or purified. The process of sanctification takes deliberate action on our part. So now, it now shifts now to what's next? The next thing is for us to do something. So sanctification, it's not just knowing na parang okay, I'm set apart because of the love of Jesus, because of what Jesus has done for me on that cross. Now it requires a certain action on our part. Ngayon, pagpinignan niyo nga po sa Tagalog, ang ibig pong sabihin nung sanctification or in Tagalog, aring banal. Ibig sabihin hindi lang po siya 'yung knowledge. Parang you take ownership, you take ownership from this truth that we have right now. Why? Because it is sacred. Why? Because itinalaga tayo, nilagay tayo. Now that we know all of this truth, itinalaga tayo to be sanctified, to be set apart, and to do something about it. You know, this definition is very important for us to establish first. Why? Because this will kick off who we are from all of these truths and what we are going to do next. So let's go to our main text this evening. So may I invite everyone to read chapter 6 with me? Next slide please. So sina Jako po talagang 'yan ay maliit. So if you have your Bibles with you, please open your Bible to Romans, chapter 6. So we'll read it, maikili lang po itong chapter na'to. So we'll read it, join me. If you're there, join me as I read Romans 6. Okay, so let's start. What shall we say then? Shall we go on sinning so that grace may increase? By no means. We are those who have died to sin, how can we live in it any longer? Or don't you know that all of us who were baptized in Christ Jesus were baptized into his death? We were therefore buried with him through baptism into death in order that just as Christ was raised from the dead through the glory of the Father, we too may live a new life. For if we have been united with him in a death like his, we will certainly also be united with him in a resurrection like his. For we know that our old self was crucified with him so that the body ruled by sin might be done away with, that we should no longer be slaves to sin, because anyone who has died has been set free from sin. Now if we died with Christ, we believe... Now if we died with Christ, we believe that we will also live with him. For we know that since Christ was raised from the dead, he cannot die again. Death no longer has mastery over him. The death he died, he died to sin once for all, but the life he lives, he lives to God. In the same way, count yourselves dead to sin but alive to God in Christ Jesus. Therefore, do not let sin reign in your mortal body so that you obey its evil desires. Do not offer any part of yourself to sin as an instrument of wickedness, but rather offer yourselves to God as those who have been brought from death to life. And offer every part of yourself to him as an instrument of righteousness for sin. For sin shall no longer be your master because you are not under the law but under grace. What then? Shall we sin because we are not under the law but under grace? By no means. Don't you know that when you offer yourselves to someone as obedient slaves, you are slaves of the one you obey? Whether you are slaves to sin, which leads to death, or to obedience, which leads to righteousness. But thanks be to God that though you used to be slaves to sin, you have come to obey from your heart the pattern of teaching that has now claimed your allegiance. You have been set free from sin and have become slaves to righteousness. I'm using example from everyday life because of your human limitations. Just as you used to offer yourselves as slaves to impurity and to ever-increasing wickedness. So now offer yourselves as slaves to righteousness leading to holiness. When you were slaves to sin, you were free from the control of righteousness. What benefit did you reap at the time from the things you are now ashamed of? Those things result in death. But now that you have been set free from sin and have become slaves of God, the benefit you reap leads to holiness and the result is eternal life. For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Christ Jesus, our Lord. Can I invite everyone to pray first before we continue? Let's all bow our heads and pray. Father, we thank you. We thank you for everyone gathered here today and ask that you surround us with your powerful, life-changing presence. Father, thank you for loving each of us and for calling us to walk with you. Father, we come before you as we meet and declare our dependence on you. Be a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. Father, fill our hearts with love. Fill our hearts with understanding. Fill our words and conversation with truth and grace. We ask all of this in praise and adoration of you, Lord Jesus. In your name we pray, amen and amen. So, pagtinignan po natin 'yung first part nung chapter 6, no? Nagtanong kaagad si Paul. Parang kanina, di ba? Parang pagkatapos nating nalaman lahat nung first five chapters ng Romans. Pagkatapos, para sinasabi ni Paul, pagkatapos nating malaman, what's next? So tingnan niyo 'yung tinanong ni Paul dun sa Romans 6:1. Pati, next slide please. So ang tanong niya, sige, next. So if we're going to read the text, no? Nakalagay dito, shall we go on sinning? Go on, no? Next, pa pakita mo nga 'yung picture dyan. Yeah. Go on, you know? In the Greek word, go on also means continue. And in Greek, it means, in Greek translation, no, not yet, not yet. Baka matakot sila, huwag mo munapakita 'yan. So in the Greek, it translates to ebb and mend. It means to abide, remain, or stay. It used to, it used to of staying in a house or making a residence there. So the question is, 'yung question na binabanggit dito ni Paul, so are we going to continue that same abiding act within the house of sin? Are we going to remain? Are we going to stay in that house of sin? And pagtinignan niyo, Paul added these very interesting words, no? So that grace may abound. Shall we go on sinning so that grace may abound? Now, Paul, in last week, in chapter 5, verse 20, Paul introduced the idea where sin abounded, grace abounded much more. He is now presenting this truth, this truth, to imply that it doesn't matter if a Christian lives a life of sin because God will always overcome greater sin with greater grace. After all, if God loves sinners, then why worry about sin? If God gives grace to sinners, then why not sin more and receive more grace? You know, some people think that their job is to sin and God's job is to forgive. So ang gagawin nila, magsisin ako na magsisin and then, Lord, nagawa ko na 'yung trabaho ko ah. So God, ikaw, gawin mo na 'yung trabaho mo, forgive me. You know, some of you, I know, you are squirming and you're smiling and natatawa kayo. But you know, the truth is, it is, this is like, parang pagsinabi mo, ang piloso po naman 'yan, di ba? But the reality is, there are some of us or there are some who really believes in this. Pakita mo 'yung picture pare. In the early part of the century, you know, this picture, true story to ah, there's a Russian monk named Gregory Rasputin. So itong taon na'to, quote-unquote healer siya. So, but aside from that, so he has followers, okay? But aside from that, he taught and lived the idea of salvation through repeated experiences of sin and repentance, no? Because he believes that those who sin the most requires the most forgiveness. So parang ang ginagawa niya, magsisin siya na magsisin, iescaleate niya 'yung klase nung sin na 'yun, escaleate niya, escaleate. And then pipigil siya dun sa point na parang ang definition niya ay, okay, itong sin na'to, great na'to. And so if he feels that, parang okay, now I will receive God's grace, greater than an ordinary sin. Tapos ang gagawin niya, he will repent. He will repent and then he will not do that sin again. But the thing is, he will do another sin. And then the same cycle happens. Escaleate niya 'yun, escaleate, escaleate. And then, you know, he will do the same thing. He will repent and he will not do it again and he will move to another sin. And he became so notorious, he became so notorious na talagang naging wanted na siya dun sa government. You know, at the end of, at the end of his life, he was murdered. But here's the thing. Some say na dahil nabuisit sa kanya 'yung government, no? 'Yung government mismo 'yung mga pumatay sa kanya. But some say, ang pumatay sa kanya, 'yung kasama niya, 'yung mga miyembro niya rin. And kaya siya pinatay ng mga miyembro niya kasi hindi na nakayanan 'yung ganong twisted na pamumuhay, 'yung ganong twisted na belief. And so, his life was ended by any means na he was murdered because of what he has been doing. And to some of you would say, parang ang sobrang twisted naman ito. Kaya nga yun 'yung sinabi ni Paul. How can we live in it any longer? Pagnakita niyo na, iba-box 'yan, pare, next, ibox mo 'yan, kapatid. How can we live in it any longer? Paano mo, parang walang tao na makakayanan na parang you continue to live in sin. And you might ask, Jerry, but ano 'yung kapitbahay ko eh, parang sanay naman siya. But you know, to be honest with you, from my own personal experience, ikamatatahimik eh. You cannot live in it that long. At some point, parang you know, isusuka mo rin. And yun 'yung sinasabi ni Paul, how can we live in it any longer? In other words, to put it theologically, does justification not necessarily connected to sanctification? Can a person be saved and go on in the same life pattern? Kaya nga ang sagot ni Paul dito, in bold letters. Kumbaga pa, if you just imagine, kung ano 'yung itsura ni Paul habang sinasabi niya to, no? By no means. To put in straighter words, no way, need never be. The very suggestion is thoroughly obnoxious to Paul. It is a blunt formula. By no means means absolutely not. A Christian continuing to remain in, abiding in, living in sin is not only impermissible but impossible. No? Friends, salvation is free. Unmerited gift of grace which overrules sin. No matter how bad the sin is, grace is greater. All doesn't change that. Grace is grace. Grace super abounds in salvation. Salvation is good, redemption is good, but we often neglect this. Pagtinignan mo ito, pare, pakita mo siya. You know, holiness is much a gift of God to the believer as redemption is in the saving act. You know, ang sarap, di ba? Pinakinggan natin first five chapters, how good God is. He saved us. He redeemed us from the penalties of sin. Pero what we are talking about right now, 'yung gift of holiness is equally important and it's an equal blessing as 'yung redemption na ginawa sa atin ni Jesus. Friends, kaya nga sinabi dito ni Paul, no? Itong holiness nito, connected ito dun sa who tayo, no? Who have died to sin, pare, pakita mo dyan. Paki-underline. I-underline natin, 'yan, who have died to sin. Ang galing, no? Ang galing ng tech natin, no? Pagka-sinabi ko, ginagawa ka agad. Who have died to sin. Here's the thing, my friends. Death and life are not compatible. You can't be dead and alive. You can't be dead and alive at the same time, agree? Di ba? Logical naman. I mean, you know, you cannot be dead and alive. Some of you, no, can be alive and look dead, joke lang. And then sometimes, you know, you go to a funeral and somebody is dead, but they look alive, no? Kaya ganon, no? But anyway, but you can really be dead and really be alive at the same time. So it is a fundamental contradiction, my friends, for a Christian to be living in sin when he has died to it. So, 'yung question na, shall we go on sinning? I hope you don't mind, na medyo inelaborate natin ito ng konte, ha? So shall we go on sinning? You know, John says, in First John, pakita mo pare 'yung text. No? The one who is born of God cannot continue to commit sin. No, the one who does that, who remains in it, gives evidence of the fact that he's never been, you know, sad to say, taken out of that domain. He's never died to that. He is still alive to that dimension of sinning. Okay, are we, are we okay so far? Are we okay so far? So, um, let, let's go to, um, continue to our, to the next verse, verse three and four, pare, next slide please. So, pakita mo 'yung text, kapatid. So in this text, no, sinimula na naman yan ang tanong. Don't you know that all of us who were baptized into Christ were baptized into his death? Sorry for the, ah, type of error, into his death? He used this idea of baptism, baptized into something in several different ways. When a person is baptized in water, they are immersed or covered with water. When they are baptized with the Holy Spirit, as in in Matthew, ah, chapter three, verse eleven, and Acts, ah, chapter one, verse five, they are immersed or covered over with the Holy Spirit. Paul refers to being baptized as immersed or covered in Christ Jesus. The believers, you know, water baptism or being baptized into Christ is a dramatization of acting out of the believer's immersion and identification with Jesus in his death, being dead to sin, no? And resurrection, living a new life. And what is this new life? No? Pakita mo ah, kapatid, no? Pakita mo tong, ah, ah, term ng baptism, and then the next one. Para po siyang ganito, picture is like, you know, ah, a bottle of drink. If in immerse mo siya dun sa cold water, it will turn out cold, di ba? If you immersed it in hot water, it will turn out hot. It is the same of our baptism or immersion with Christ. We were dead and so are sins. But we are, but we also had a new life. And that life is a life that is freed from sin. Pakita mo nga, kapatid, 'yan. We are freed from sin. And the good news is that we are freed in two ways. First one, we are liberated from the penalty of sin. No? We don't need to, you know, we don't need to, ah, go through this, ah, ah, we, we, we don't need to face the condemnation of being away with God, 'yung eternal separation from God, 'yung being in hell. We are freed from that, we are liberated from God, from, from, from that, you know? You know, my friends, God sees you. And you are His, we are His forgiven child. Although we are not perfect and we are still, you know, prone to commit sin, but we are no longer slaves of this penalty of sin. Because, pare, pakita mo to. Sin has no power over us anymore. You know, parang 'yung dito sa, ah, 'yung, 'yung song, 'yung hymn ng Old Rugged Cross. In that old rugged cross stained with blood so divine, a wondrous beauty I see, for it was that old cross Jesus suffered and died to pardon, and hear this, sanctify me. You know, friends, it's not God just saying, you know, now you're saved. It is God transforming you. It is God transforming you and me. It is not only God saying something to be true, it is God making it true. It is not only God declaring you righteous. It is God recreating you and me in righteousness. Amen to that? Next slide please. So, if sin has no power over us anymore, what's next? Pare, pakita mo 'yung text natin, 'yung verses five to seven, no? It says here, we are, so we are liberated from both penalty and power of sin. So what's the reason behind this? No? For we have been united with Him. If you have your Bibles with you, can you circle that, united with Him? You know, united together, united with Him expresses a very close union. This phrase, kamigan, it exactly expresses the process by which a graft becomes united with the life of a tree, you know? Have you heard of grafting? Those hardcore plantito and plantita are familiar with this, no? Ah, itong picture na to, ganito po siya, no? Ah, pare, pakita mo 'yung text about, ah, 'yung definition ng grafting. And let me read this to you. Grafting is a technique that joins two plants in, into one. In general, no, susugatan niyan 'yung isang plant, no? And then ikakabit 'yung isang plant. So, eh, eh, as soon as it is inserted into that wood, o 'yung sugat dun sa plant, 'yung tissues nila can grow together. You know, it's the same thing, ah, when Christ lives in us. No, we are free and can no longer be slaves to sin because we will not, the, the thing is, we will not fight this sin alone. Kung before, parang lagi tayong natatalo nung sin, kasi tayo lang mag-isa 'yung lumalaban. Now we have Jesus who will not just fight for us, but will fight with us. And this includes 'yung daily battle of sinning, or daily battle of sin, di ba? You know, because of this unity, pare, pakita mo 'yung text. Sin has no power over us anymore because of the Christ who lives in us. Because of the Christ who lives in us. We will be able to really, um, experience this sanctification, not because of our own power, not because of our own doing, not because of our knowledge, no, sa lahat ng mga nalalaman natin ngayon, but because of Christ who lives in us. Are we okay so far? Can I just see some thumbs up po muna? Para, mak, tignan ko lang kung gising pa kayo, baka mamaya kayo ay tinutulugan niyo na ako. Yun ang mahirap pagka-zoom eh, no? Di na, pinakikita ko sino na tutulog. Can you, can I just see some thumbs up please? Okay, so, gising pa naman pala tayo, so let's continue, alright, alright, next slide. Next slide please. So now we are living with Christ and living to God. Look at this text, no, from verses eight to eleven. We died with Christ, look at 'yung, ah, hinai-like ko na yellow. We, we died with Christ, we believe that we will also live with Him. Look at this, friends, I want you to focus on this one. Walk in newness of life or likeness of his resurrection, or live with him. We just look at the doctrine, the doctrine that, you know, ah, we are dead to sin, that we don't have to keep doing evil. The opposite side of that coin is that we can live like Christ. Ang hirap naman 'yung parang, we namumuhay tayo para lang iwasan 'yung kasalanan, no? The opposite side of it. Now Paul is, um, giving us another, parang kumbaga sa pelikula, another sin, ah, another scene, no? Which is a, which is not a better scene, no? But, you know, a reality, noong boom picture, no? That we can live like Christ. Part of having spiritual life means having the ability to live a holy and victorious life like Christ. When Christ died, kapatid, the reality is that wasn't the end, and we know that. No, hindi, hindi, hindi katakosan na namatay si Christ. No, he didn't cease to exist. Instead, he was raised, he had new life. And this is the same truth for all of us. When we die to sin, we don't cease to exist. We have a new nature capable of righteousness, of which we are incapable before. And then Paul said, tingnan niyo po ito, the life that he lives, he lives to God. The new life we are granted isn't given so that we can live, para lang sa sarili natin. We have this new life, no? Just like Jesus, with the new life that he had, he lives to God. Friends, we are dead to sin. We aren't just dead to sin, free from sin, and given eternal life to live, to, to, you know, mamuhay as we please. But the reality is, all of this is meant for us to live, to live, to please God. And then Paul said, no? Pagtinignan niyo, eh, 'yung, 'yung last, ah, text, no, dito sa, sa nakikita niyo sa screen. Count yourselves dead to sin, but alive to God in Christ Jesus. Count yourselves to be dead to sin. Count here, or in other translation, it mean, i- i- it's translated to consider. No? So, consider here, count here, means unreserved confidence in what you know to be true. It doesn't mean, no, we trick ourselves into thinking, ah, di naman kami makasalanan, no? Hindi ganon. It means that God has revealed the truth to us, that believers in Him can be victorious. Christ has already paid for our sin. And we are claiming this, you know, we, we can claim this truth as our own and take, you know, God's word, ah, by it. It is true, we are to live in light of the truth and not, you know, keep going back to our old ways. Kanina nga, di ba, sinabi natin, di tayo pwedeng manirahan dun sa bahay na yun, dun sa bahay ng sin na yun. You know, it's like, pa- pakita mo pare 'yung picture. It's like, parang ganito 'yan, di ba? Parang, it's like a parent, no? But for keeps on, ah, forsaking your responsibility to his child or to his single and, ah, to his entire family and, you know, would just enjoy single life. In short, ayaw niyo 'yung, 'yung, ah, meron siya ngayon. I know, to some of you who are parents here, parang ang labo naman niyan, labo, di ba? Di ba? And parang ang sarap sabihin, dito sa, sa, sa taong ito, pare, pakita mo, pakita natin 'yung text, para mabasa ng lahat. No? Look, you are a parent, you have a responsibility. You need to accept this fact and live like it. Your bachelor days are over. You have a new life and better life. Enjoy it and start acting like a parent. Kapatid, pagtinignan natin 'yung verse eleven, no? Pakita mo nga, pare, 'yung text, lakihan natin, which will be our, ah, memory verse for this week, no? Ah, it is actually sums up what we are talk, what we have talked about for the ne- for the last few minutes and what we're going to talk about in the next, no? Um, pakibar, pak, sabay-sabay nga natin basahin ito. Can we, can we just, you know, turn our audio? And can we just say this, ah, three times? Para, ngayon pa lang eh, 'yung activity natin ng memory verse eh, magawa na natin. Can we read it all together? Oh, sige, simula natin na, okay, ah, Romans six eleven, in the same way, count yourselves dead, sin, but alive to God in Christ Jesus. Eh, count yourselves dead, sin, alive to God in Christ Jesus. Okay, muntik lang magsabay-sabay. Thank you very much po sa inyong lahat, alright? Sige, you, you can now, ah, ano, magmute ulit po, okay? So, pagtinignan natin ito, di ba? Coming from that example of that irresponsible parent, no? When we look at our lives and we feel that, you know, parang, yun pa rin, dun pa rin tayo namumuhay. You know, we, we can tell this to ourselves. Let's rephrase this, this statement, 'yung nakikita niyo sa screen. Ayan na. And I want you, don't unmute, no? Tell this to yourself. If you are struggling with living in that house or domain of sin and not living with Christ or not living to God, tell this to yourself. Look, you are a follower of Jesus. You have a responsibility. You need to accept this fact and live like it. Your sinning days are over. You have a new life and better life. Enjoy it and start being alive to God. Pwede niyo pong picturan 'yan. Tapos if you feel that parang you need some strength and you need some battery, basahin niyo lang po 'yan, okay? The point is this, Paul's point is very clear, my friends. Something dramatic and life-changing happen in the life of the believer as soon as he, he or she knew, knew this truth. You can't die and rise again without changing your life. Let me repeat that. You can't die and rise again without changing your life. Next slide please. But here's a question, you know, which we have encountered, I think two weeks back. No, may nagtanong, um, Jerry, ah, bakit ganon? Actually, hindi pala Jerry, no, during our, um, ah, ah, during our, ah, ah, Q and A portion. Tinanong, bakit, ano, bakit, ah, ganon? Inaccept ko si Jesus, tagal ko ng pessyano. Bakit, ah, patuloy pa rin ako dun sa sin, parang hindi ko malabanan? You know, I believe that, 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 that question is not just for that person, but to, no? If not all of us, to most of us. Kaya nga merong kanta before, di ba, 'yung rap, gusto kong bumait pero di ko magawa. Ah, sa mga buhay na nung panahon na yun, alam niyo kung ano 'yung kinakanta ko, di ba? Parang, and Paul also said this, di ba, parang, parang, I can't do what I need to do. I can't do the good things instead, I always do the bads, ba- bad stuff. No? We, why, why do we keep on sinning? No? Um, there was this story, no, ah, several nuns, mga madre po, nasa second floor sila nung convent, one night. And then bigla po nagkasunog. And then realized nung mga, ah, madre po, ah, that 'yung fire exit was blocked. And so isa lang 'yung ano nila, lalabasa nila, 'yung bintana, ng bintana. So ang ginawa nila, 'yung habit nila, tinanggal nila, 'yung, 'yung, parang 'yung belo sa tagalog, no? Tinanggal nila, tapos tinali nila together para makagawa ng roof. At yun 'yung ginawa nila para makawat, makababa sila dun sa window. And after they went to the ground safely, no? Pinuntaan sila nun reporter, ton tuwa, so sabi nun reporter, so, iba kayo, natakot na 'yung habit ninyo, ah, mapuputol or masisira. And then the old, the nun just replied, nah, hindi, not at all. Don't you know that old habits are hard to break? Ah, kung hindi kayo natawa, bala kayo sa buhay niyo. Kung hindi niyo naggets, bala na rin kayo, kalimutan na natin yun. The important thing is this, old habits are hard to break. Old habits are hard to break, pare, pakita mo 'yan, para, um, makita natin 'yan. Old habits are hard to break, no? Coming from this text, no, ah, verses twelve to thirteen. Therefore do not let sin reign in your mortal body so that you obey its evil desires. Do not offer any part of yourself to sin as an instrument of wickedness. Paul was, you know, reminding us because he know our, he knows our capability. Old habits are hard to break. The reality, my friends, is this, we may laugh about this, you know? We may paramingiwi tayo dito. Because the reality is, we are used to the patterns of this world. Our bodies are used of doing these evil patterns, and we have to say no to that. But we have to recognize these realities. We are not making excuses, we are recognizing these realities. For the longest time, no? Our eyes were trained to see things that are unholy. Our lips, our lips, um, Our lips, our lips, um, they are used to say things that are unloving. We curse, we gossip. Our hands, our hands, we, we are used to do things that are not pleasing to the Lord. No, uh, we, we type things that are not edifying, di ba? Sometimes maggarant lang tayo, para saan? I mean, uh, sometimes magpaparinig tayo sa social media, we type things, para saan? I mean, uh, in our workplace, in our business, sometimes we sign documents that we know that are not, you know, that are not fair, sometimes are not legal. Our feet, these feet walk in a path that we know that it is not from God's. Because the reality, my friends, is this, pakita mo pari 'yung text. Our bodies are wired together. So, the reality is, it will be a struggle. It is not easy. Let me give you further picture on this one. Parin next slide, please. Imagine, imagine po, you are a slave in a household na where the master's name is, hmm, let's say Brutus, 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 no? Uh, you are a slave in a household na ang master ang pangalan Brutus. All your life, you are told what to do. What Brutus says, since you are his slave, you will do. Mula pagka-bata, ganun ang ginagawa mo. Now, you are an adult, and you are now used to do things for Brutus. Cleaning his garden, doing his laundry, dishes. You buy his stuff, in an instant, you know, hearing his voice, hinga pangalan eh. You know what you will do for him. Now imagine, imagine, there's a neighbor named Popeye. Imagine, there's a neighbor named Popeye. He sees you, he sees your slavery, he, he has seen your slavery ever since. And so, he saves up money so that he can purchase you out of that slavery. So, ginawa niya, he purchased you. And now he, he says, you are now free. But he says, you are also free to choose what you will do after this. After all, sabi niya sa'yo, my household is in need of you. Kita-kita, nakita ko 'yung capability mo, 'yung capacity mo, so pwede ka magtrabaho dito. And so you said, hmm, ang okay ito ah, sige, I'll work for you. And then, the following day, you are in the garden, mi Popeye. Nagwa-water ka ng plants, nagagardining ka, and then suddenly, you heard Brutus' voice. And all your senses just go ringing to Brutus' command because you are used to that voice all of your life. You know, my friends, that is the exact situation when we are, when we are being haunted, when be, when we are being haunted, when, when we are facing our sin. But the reality, my friends, is this, we are no longer slaves to that sin. Just like 'yung, 'yung slave, no, just like example ng slave. The reality is, yes, it might go ringing to all of your senses. But the reality also is that, hindi ka na slave nung sin na yun. We are now free to choose who is our master. Now, that's the question, pakita mo kapati, who is our master? Who is your master? Next slide, please. No, pagtinignan ninyo, no, Paul directly answered this. For sin shall no longer be your master because you are, uh, because you are not under the law but under grace. You are not under the law but under grace. Law, the law. Law clearly define God's standard and shows us where we fall short of it. But the reality is, it cannot give the freedom from sin that grace provides. Remember that, you know, in Romans five, verse twenty-one, remember that grace reigns through righteousness. Remember this, my friends. Grace, not law, provides the freedom and the power to live over sin. John states the same idea in another way, pakita mo kapati, 'yung ano, 'yung text. You know, in, in, in John, it says, in John three, six, nineteen, three, six, and nine, says, uh, tinignan niyo po, binasa niyo po, no? Whoever abides in him does not habitually sin. Whoever habitually sin has neither seen him nor known him. Whoever has been born of God does not habitually sin for his seed remains in him, and he cannot habitually sin because he has been born of God. In the opposite, pakita mo 'yung text kapati, in first Peter two, uh, chapter, uh, verse two, verse sixteen. 'Yung context niyan is that, live as people who are free. Live as people who are obedient and aims for righteousness. What Paul is saying is this, one way or the other, we will serve somebody. The fact is, the option to live our life without serving either sin or obedience, it's not open for us. So, you either obey, uh, your sin or the sin which leads to death or you be in obedience which leads to righteousness. So, the question is, how can we choose this master? How can we choose our master? How can we consistently choose the master? Can you, uh, uh, next slide, please? Are we, are we okay so far? Are we good so far? Can I see some thumbs up again, please? Uh, baka natutulog na kayo, malapit na po tayo. Uh, we're already all, more than half of, uh, our talk, no? So, how do we consistently choose our master? Let's cut this verse into, into two, no? First, no, how can we choose our master? Listen to this, huh? First, listen, pakita mo kapati, para hindi natin, hindi lang makalimutan. If, aki-ins circle yang, uh, uh, obey, uh, yan, yeah, yeah. Listen, tinignan niyo po ito, come to obey from your heart the pattern of teaching. What Paul is saying is that, listen by reading. As Paul said, come to obey from your heart the pattern of teaching, and those teachings will be through his word, the Bible. So, we have to read our Bibles, mga kaibigan, and to plant in our hearts 'yung teachings so that we will have, so that it will enable us to have victorious life. No, um, don't listen, dun sa bulong ng kaaway, pari pakita mo. Don't listen dun sa sinasabi ng kaaway na every time you, 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 you know, you fall into sin. Ah, hindi mo kaya 'yan, hindi mo, wa- wala kang pag-asa, balik ka na lang uli sa dati. What Paul is saying, what the Bible is, is, is teaching us, we, we should not listen to this, rather, we listen to this. We listen to the voice of Jesus, no, na nagsasabi ng, you are mine and you are no longer slave to your sin. But the thing is, my friends, how can you listen if you don't know those words? And the only way we can know these words, if you are reading our Bible, our Bible is God's, you know, um, uh, communication line sa atin, di ba? Uh, as we, as we, you know, we can, we, we can continuously choose the master if we continuously listening by reading his word. And equally important, the other half of this text, no, pari pakita mo nga. Consecrate, consecrate, pakita mo kapati, 'yung ano, 'yung, uh, san nanggagaling niya, yaan. Allegiance, allegiance, you know, um, consecrate is equally important than listen. No, consecrate also means sanctify. Paul said, claim your allegiance. Your allegiance to whom? Your allegiance to Jesus, and how do we do this? If we go back dun sa verse thirteen and we rephrase it, no? Papalta natin, ito 'yung sinasabi ni Paul. Offer yourselves to God as those who have been brought from death to life and offer every part of yourself to him as an instrument of righteousness. So, what I'm saying is this, when we wake up in the morning, not being legalistic, no, no? Before we start our day, man, before we do anything else, you know, as you start your day, you say, you say to the Lord, Lord, I offer my eyes to you that it will only choose to see what is right and holy. After you read his text, after you read his word, Lord, I offer my lips to you so that it may only speak encouragement. Lord, I offer my hands to you so that the work of my hands be a blessing to others. Lord, I offer my feet to you so that it will only look, uh, will only walk to the path na gusto mong lakaran ko. But, what I'm saying is, friends, it requires not just knowing that God is there. It requires for us to do, you know, we communicate with him as well. We listen to his word, we continuously, intentionally, day by day, consecrate ourselves, offer ourselves to God. Amen. Next verse, uh, next slide, please. Ang ganda pa kong ganon, sobrang, parang, honestly, when I was studying this and when I was doing this, halos gusto ko ng, unang gusto ko ng isumpa si Doc June. Doc June, ang hirap nito, walang, walang ano, walang, walang outline, walang text, kanya-kanyang gawa, ang hirap naman nito. And so, parang, as I was also doing this, parang, this also came to my, to my head. This all of this true and applicable. Parang, okay, true, sige, walang question dun, pero applicable ba ito? You know, kaya nga sinabi ni Paul ganito eh, pari pakita mo 'yung text. I speak in human terms because of the weakness of your flesh. No, Paul was just like, apology as an illustration because it was so, uh, degrading and persuasive, pervasive and, especially because many of his Roman readers, you know, are slaves. And so, he knows that this illustration will work for his audience, di ba? Or his readers, uh, mas makaka-relate sila. And Paul, and Paul, Paul repeats a point made earlier. Present your members as slaves to righteousness. Sino ba 'yung members na to? All parts of your body, remember? All are wired. Present your members as slaves to righteousness. It means that we don't show up for work to our, ganito 'yan, ganito 'yan. Imagine this, you have a new job, and the first, 'yung first day ng job mo, uh, umalis ka sa work during lunchtime. And then you go back to your old job and ask your old boss kung ano gusto niyang pagawa sa'yo. Di ba, parang, hindi ata tama, parang, wala ka na dun eh, pero babalikan mo yun, and then, parang, hindi, hindi naman intentionally, pero you will live the way you are living before. Now, Paul is presenting a very direct statement. Parang sinasabi niya, dito, 'yung etong verse twenty-one, parang sinasabi niya dito, sige, kung hindi mo gets that you were dead to sin, isipin mo to. What benefit did you reap at that time from the things you are now ashamed of? Parang sinasabi niya, how little fruit and satisfaction your former sins have afforded you in the very time of omitting them. How nothing but shame and sorrow follow upon the remembrance of this sin, this sin and its consequences? How death, eternal death, will be the certain conclusion of them? Is Christianity true, or all of this true? But, parin, pakita mo 'yung mga tanong. Di ba, does it work? In all of what is happening, you know, we are, we see in the news, we see in the social media, we are told that we can identify our own gender based on the, our preference. Some we can define truth. No, parin, the, the, does all of these things applicable in our time right now? Parin, pakita mo 'yung ano, 'yung dalawang text pa niyan. Will this change us? Does it make a difference in our life? You know, obviously, the answer is yes. In fact, these questions are not posed here to ask questions. It is really meant to be a challenge. Does all of this true and applicable? You know, all of this, it should work. It should change you. It should change us. It should make a difference in our lives. So, as we close, next slide, please. What's next? What's next for us who knows the truth? Parin, pakita mo 'yung text. It says, for the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Christ Jesus, our, our Lord. Bro, pakita mo 'yung dalawang picture. You know, when you work for sin, your wages are death. Parang katulad rin ng employee, di ba? Asa meron kang tinabaho, eto bayad mo. Same thing, when you work for sin, your wage or wages are death. But when we serve God, yes, we will get no pay, but he freely gives us the best benefit package imaginable. Actually, hindi lang imaginable eh, way beyond our imagination. Friends, chapter six ended with this famous verse that we often use as we begin our gospel sharing, as we begin sharing the truth, like, di ba, panimula natin, san ka pupunta pag namatay ka? Uh, you know, the wages of sin is death and blah, 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 you know? But may I encourage everyone? May we look at, may we look at these verses differently beginning today. Na hindi na lang siya spiel for intro to share the gospel, but rather a reminder. A reminder that we are sanctified. Parin, pakita mo 'yung last text natin. May our lives be a living testimony, a demonstration of a person who is freed from sin. Let me end, uh, with the story, parin, pakita mo 'yung next slide, last slide natin. Now, once upon a time, no, actually, this is a children's story, once upon a time, some of you knows this. Uh, some, some, once, once upon a time, there was a colorless tiger, and all of his shades were gray, black and white, you know, and something na parang black and white movie nung dati, di ba? Um, and because of this situation, no, he, this tiger became very famous. And so, lahat ng mga painters of buong mundo na challenge dito sa, sa tiger na to. And so, all of these painters, famous painters, went to the zoo and tried painting the tiger, no? And all of them tried painting, pero lahat lang nalulusaw, lahat nawawala 'yung ano, nawawala 'yung paint. And then, there was this painter, they call it a crazy painter, ang pangalan niya Van Cough. Van Cough, bakit? Kasi, uh, nagpipinta lang siya sa la, sa ano, sa hanging, no? Nagpipituro siya sa la, nagpipint, page siya sa, sa hanging, then sasabi niya, wow, ganda ng painting, pero wala nakakapita. So, everybody was calling him a crazy painter. And so, he heard about this tiger, no, so pumunta siya dun sa zoo, ako naman ang susubo. No, as he enters dun sa cage nung tiger, no? Before he began painting, 'yung imaginary brush niya, tsaka imaginary, uh, uh, paint niya. Before he begin, he whispered something to the tiger, no? So, bulong niya dun sa tiger, tapos pipinto, pipinta siya. And lo and behold, unti-unte, nakikita 'yung, nagkakaroon ng kulay 'yung tiger. And exacto umuulan, so hindi, nakikita nila na hindi, nawaw, nagba-brush off 'yung, 'yung kulay. Tuloy-tuloy lang siya, tapos nakikita nila si Van Cough, bulong lang ng bulong, bulong, pinta, bulong, pinta, bulong, pinta. And lo and behold, parin, pakita mo, no? Naging ganito 'yung tiger. The tiger produced the most vivid colors any tiger had ever had. And the result was truly beautiful. And everyone, no, wanted to know, ano 'yung sikreto nitong Van Cough na to? Everybody was laughing at him and, uh, tinanong siya, parang, anong sinabi mo? Ano pa 'yung binubulong mo? Eto 'yung binulong niya. Etto 'yung binulong niya. In just a few days, you will be free again. You shall see. You will be free again. Paulit-ulit niyang sinasabi ito, you will be free again, you will be free again. You know, for us here, we have the book of Romans, not just whispering, but actually shouting to us, we are free, we are freed from sin. And I would like to part these words to you before we pray. Live with this truth. Live with this truth, my friends. Let's bow our heads and pray. Father, we have covered so much rich truth tonight and are so thankful for the miracle that has been brought in our lives. Jesus, we're literally, literally are miracles. And because of you, we are new creatures who in the inner man are trying to be holy and righteous and godly because we know that our bodies are the temple of the Spirit of God who dwells in us as it were the holy place that you have made in us. Father, help us to understand the reality of this miracle and to know that the manifestation of this as we long to obey, to dominate in our lives, not obedience of sin, but obedience to righteousness. And from the heart that's, our longing because you've changed us, you will continue to change us. And we want to go from righteousness to righteousness, to righteousness. We want to progress from holiness to holiness. Hear us, Father. Hear us. We thank you that you've already made us new on the inside and we are already fitted for heaven. Ang inan marami salamat for your grace. There is a part of us, and although we admit that there's a part of us ready to go into your glorious presence, but we're, we also admit that there is still part of us that is in this human flesh. Father, we plead you. We humble ourselves before you. May we live as to manifest Christ and may we consistently, constantly yield up as instruments of righteousness. May we give our body as living sacrifice, holy and acceptable to you, which is our spiritual worship. Father, we thank you for the ongoing work of the Spirit who does this in us. We will rejoice to see the increase of righteousness because of your help. Because of you being with us. Father, give us this victory and give us hope as we look forward to enter in the full and eternal joy of being with you, our Lord and Savior. In this, we ask in the mightiest name of your Son Jesus. And everybody say, amen and amen.
Amen.
Good evening po sa inyong lahat. God bless you.